Call of order, the superintendent's informational meeting of August 4th at, I don't have a clock in my room, 7 or 8. Let's start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let's start with the special reports. Mr. Letter.
Good evening, all. I do not have a report tonight because our next meeting is scheduled tomorrow, so we didn't have a meeting last month. I do not have a report.
Now to Jones back. I believe we have one voting item, so we do need to take a roll call tonight. Dr. Harris?
We have a motion and a second.
We're on a roll call now.
I'm sorry. I apologize.
Okay, just the board. Mrs. East Icing?
Here.
Mr. Kluchasik?
Here.
Dr. Kraschko?
Here.
Mr. Leonard?
Here.
Mr. New. Mr. Nemec?
Here.
Mr. Petrusi?
Here.
Mr. Stofar?
Here.
And Dr. Trey. Okay. We do have a call. Okay. All right. So no report, Mr. Letter?
No report.
Thank you. Dr. Trey is not here for libraries and legislative council. Did he give a report to anybody? Okay. Number one. Mr. Petrusi, career at tech.
Thank you, Madam President.
You're here.
When he met on July 18th, the biggest thing on the agenda was hiring a new principal. And his name was, you got, this is your own note in your packet that I'll just go through for the public of it, Eric Westendorf. And he came to us with, he had a background in special education dealing with disadvantaged kids, behavior problems. And he came across as a real strong candidate. It was recommendation administration and his starting salary is $70,000 and I think he started today. I think today was his first day on the job. And he'll just, he'll take over from there. And time will tell. But we did fill the position. That's why we never have a July meeting, but we had to have a July meeting this time here so we get the position filled. Okay. Now, another note that, no goodie report, by the way. There's no culinary class going on now, so I can't advertise that too much. Colonel Spooty, who's a board member from Yawk, and helped guide us through the renovations at VOTech, you know, $6 million. And as you remember, we have nine VOTech members and he had to get unanimous vote and there were, one school district in particular would not, originally we were $9 million, they would not approve it unless we went down to $6 million. So we had to do some cutting to go down to $6 million. One of the things we cut was cosmetology. In cosmetology, OSHA and maybe Mr. Nemec, Mr. Leonard, or Dr. Kraschko would know that 2009, the mechanical code in 2009 for ventilation put out by OSHA, we weren't meeting it. And by 2016, if we'd ever done up the code, then it's going to cost, I think, double or triple the cost. So what has to happen? Either we move it, and our cosmetology is interior, all the walls are inside, we had to move the entire shop to an outside wall and put three holes in the outside wall to create ventilation, or you had to leave words at and put six holes in the wall and we weren't about to move it because it'd be quite an expense to move it to. So to get this done, we're going to advertise and we're going to get the specs drawn up. We hope to get this done before winter comes. And this is going to be done, it's going to cost us approximately $200,000. And all we have in our fund balance, this is already $208,000, is approximately $450,000. But we're going to have to take it from our fund balance. Now, here at Penn Trafford, where if you recall, a few years ago, we put in new bleachers at our gymnasium and we took the money for a fund balance, but the entire fund balance is replaced the following year. Well, at VOTech, we can only replace $60,000 a year. So it's going to take us about three and a half years to replenish all the money we've taken out of the, for the cosmetology, the ventilation, to get that done. And it's going to be done and we're probably going to have bids for our next meeting this month here, which is going to be 4th, 5th, 6th, 20th of this month. I hope we can approve the bid on that. The renovation project is 99 percent done. They replaced the switchgear at July 1st, got that all done. They had shut down whole plant, the air conditioning, everything, replaced whole switchgear, get that all completed. And the roof is done and everything worked out perfectly as far as renovation goes. And I want to thank my fellow board members here for their complete cooperation and school was not been, it's been very fluid the whole time during construction and everything went this way it should be. And my hats off to Mr. Giese and Mr. Elwood, who directed the whole thing, and also Mr. Spooty too, Colonel Spooty from Yawk, they both did a great job. That's all I have, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Rec boards, Penn Township.
No report. We don't have a meeting until September.
Okay. Trafford.
Okay.
Rec for Mr. Petrusi.
We met July 28th, last Monday, and went through the entire agenda, the many things, the playgrounds, great season, great participation, the numbers were very good. The kids that responded, they all kind of activities for them. PTAR did a great job of keeping everything fluid and it was, it went very well. I understand it's the whole way, the whole school district wide, it all went very good. The, there will be, another auction coming up, this is our silver anniversary, number 25. It'll be the 28th of February and we hope that this, maybe most money we're ever going to raise, but this will be the silver anniversary of 20th February. And the parking meters are there. Haven't got them all unlocked yet to make sure that they're available. They're still in my basement. I've got a locksmith trying to get a key and just some to pull that little lever down they can get the money out. But they're collector, I hope they're collector's items. We have three, four singles and 13 doubles. And they're all the manual ones, which are, they are, I won't find out how much they're in demand. I just go make sure that the flea market people don't come in and make a scalping of us. I'll make sure they always go for one kind of price. The BY, the fountains working, the geese, huge problem. Huge problem. I don't know what to even say about them. Next week, City Regis having their annual, not annual, first I believe, picnic at the BY Park on Sunday. And, excuse me, they expect me, a big turnout. BY Park has grown tremendously in popularity. It's, it still needs a lot of work. The track, the fountain looks pretty. It's, it looks very, very good.
Are there walking trails there?
Yes. There's a walking path goes around it. There's trails of the, excuse me, the senior scouts put up above and around. There's camping site on the right-hand side. They put that in, they put steps in too. But they're growing a little bit right now. But that's all. Our next meeting, I believe, is August 25th. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Petrusi. Penn Borough. No, he's not here. Any report? Okay. All right, PTAR, that's me. And our meeting's not till next Monday, so I have nothing to report. Community Education Foundation?
Sure. Our meeting's not till August 27th. However, the Fund Development Committee has met and they came up with some different ideas that we're going to discuss on the 27th. So if you ever want to attend one of our meetings, you're always welcome and the library is 6 o'clock. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Harris. We already had a brief executive session and so there will not be any need to break at this point. Moving on, information, Dr. Harris?
All right. I'm going to turn the first one over to our athletic director, Carrie Hetrick.
Thank you, Dr. Harris. This time, I'd like to recognize something very special tonight. A few months ago, Mr. Larry Cooper was inducted into the Pennsylvania Athletic Trainers Hall of Fame. And so I invited him here this evening and I know he brought his family with him. So at this time, I'd like to present him to the school board tonight and congratulate Coop on all his accomplishments here at Penn Trafford. So Coop, if you can come up and bring your family up.
Thank you. Appreciate it. This is my wife, Lisa. My daughter, Delaney, on the left. My daughter, Molly. My older daughter, Sarah's not here. She lives out of state. He just, just wanted to thank you for the opportunity to come in. This is a great, long achievement award and I couldn't have done it without, you know, support from the school board, from the administration, from Mr. Hetrick, from my coworker, Ms. Delando, and support obviously from my family. But, you know, one of the things I said in my induction was that I've been blessed with a great opportunity to work in a, in a good community, good school district that recognizes my profession, but also encourages involvement. I think that, I appreciate that more than you can ever imagine. Thank you. Carrie asked me, I feel like it was show and tell, Carrie asked me to bring in a few things. This is, this is a plaque that they award at the ceremony. And obviously, something I'll cherish and put in my home. I was also, and I don't know if Carrie mentioned this or not, I have a proclamation from the Senate of Pennsylvania, signed by two state senators, one from where I grew up and also from here, Kim Ward and also Robert Robbins. So that was very nice to receive. That was kind of special. And as a special, this is really, I didn't realize they did something like this. I've been on the Pennsylvania Board of Directors and that, and this is something new. They provide a tree to be planted wherever you want, at no expense. And with a plaque that they want, obviously would like to put on. I talked to Mr. Engleise and Mr. Hetrick already, with, obviously like to wait until renovation is done. We don't want to get it torn and planted and torn up.
It's knocked down someplace.
I'd like to put it on the pumpkin tree out there. But obviously, that would be real nice, you know, to be able to put that someplace where it would be noticeable at some point in time. So that was real nice. And then he also asked me to bring in, I also received an award from the national level, Athletic Training Service Award in Indianapolis at the end of June, so that as well. I couldn't do it without, without the support from the school board, so thank you.
Mary, how many published articles have you had? Has I been reading a lot? Did you?
I honestly couldn't tell you. Well over 30. And I am doing some now, right now, in the process of, three of them, I just got word today, there's an NATA news, our national organization does a monthly, monthly magazine. And I have, till August 28th, I have three articles I have to do for that.
Larry is, we've talked about Larry and his accomplishments before at the board level and, you know, he's, he's recognized not only here in the local Western Pennsylvania area in WPIL, but he is, he is well-known in the PIA, in the state level, in the national level. He sits on just about every committee that's out there. His expertise is unbelievable and we frequently, I know he gets phone calls constantly from the schools locally, statewide, his expertise is sought after all over the place. He's been on national news broadcasts, the, in different, different areas he's been recognized in. So his contributions have been tremendous not only to profession, but, you know, we're, to be able to have a man with his expertise and his dedication and commitment at the local level here at this high school, we're very blessed and he's, I don't know that anybody can replace a guy like him. I know he's stuck, he's got about five or 10 more years left in the year, right?
Yeah. How many years have you been with us? 24, here. I've been a lot for Gene Bray with us.
He's a great asset, so we thank you. I mean, this man put, you know, between the athletic director and head athletic trainer, I'm not sure who puts in the most hours, but he is here. He comes here, in here at 7, 8 o'clock in the morning, he doesn't have to show up until 9 o'clock and he's here until 7, 8, 9 o'clock, 10 o'clock at night sometimes. So he puts the time and he's a very dedicated employee to what he does and he's passionate about what he does. He cares about the kids, so he's, he's a great asset. So, thanks, Larry.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you again.
For the next item, I'm actually going to have Scott Engleise because he's actually in charge of the building project. He has an introduction to someone.
Yeah, I have Nate Mallory, who's from Misero Construction. I think you guys met him last month. He's on board now. He's kind of replacing Dan from Misero in terms of taking over the project. And as you know, the project is underway. We really got things underway here a month or so ago and it's a little bit slow, but Nate's going to talk about the details of that and where we're at right now and where we're heading with it. But there has been work on the inside. The music area is getting some extensive work right now and they just started to do some exterior work, but I'll let Nate, I don't want to steal your thunder.
No, it's all right. And I was also going to say Hank was going to be here with Axle tonight, but. Hank was going to be here tonight, but unfortunately he was sick and Scott told him to stay away, so we all didn't get sick as well, so.
We appreciate that.
But the team actually so far with Scott, myself and Hank, has actually worked really well together. So, to start off too, our prime contractors, we got, which you know is kind of a little bit of luck of the draw, a little bit, turns out to be really, really good. We knew most of them coming in. Lowbar was kind of the unknown a little bit, but they've really shown themselves to be a top company. They've helped Scott out a couple times already with little things, you know, so they turned out to be really good. Site work outside, as you can see, there's an excavator out there right now, so we just started the site work. We'd always like to start day one with the shovel in the ground, but fortunately, the storm structures there take about three or four weeks to get, so. So one big change since that recession happened is construction materials. You just can't get them off the shelf no more, so it takes a little bit longer than it used to be to get materials. So they are starting that. The good news is they, the bus loop and the road extension going on down, they see that is finishing in early October, so you should have it finished before you worry about any of the asphalt plans or anything closing down. And they usually don't close down there early November, depending on the weather, so we should be good there. They're also going to try to tackle as well the extra parking that goes down by the auditorium at the same time, to try to get that all done this fall. After that's done, that's when you'll see the work begin on the annex, because we've got to get that bus loop in so the buses have somewhere to go before we start the annex. So that's why you don't see the work starting over there yet. The buses would be stuck, so. The temporary classrooms are almost ready to go. All the drywall's in on them, the electrical's roughed in. We've been patching the carpet and the ceiling's in there, so they're good to go. The painter comes this week and then Monday, we hope to turn it over to the school to be able to do a finish. So there's no issue with them, you know, starting the school year. Music area, Scott said we're working in there right now, the chorus room and there's two storage rooms we turn over early. We're just waiting on the finishes, which is the paint and the carpet and the base and everything to get here so we can turn that over for the first of the school year, but we don't see any issues with that. We're working back in that band room and we're doing the heavy demolition right now, taking out the ceilings, taking down the concrete block. We're trying to get as much of that done as possible right now. Our turnover date isn't until October, but they want to try to get that noisy, loud stuff out of the way as much as possible, just so it doesn't distract students as much. So we're trying to do the best that we can through there. The administration area, the start school will be exactly the same, but then you'll see construction starting there afterwards in about approximately three weeks. The big lead time item in there is door frames. Door frames take about three, four weeks to get, so. But the work in there, once we get in there, isn't major work after we cut in the doorway, so that should go pretty quick through there. Then we'll coordinate with the administration to make sure we, less than a dozen as possible through there. And the last really change you may see is the corridors. Originally, when Dan was involved, we were talking about taking out all corridor ceilings this summer. What we did is getting with our mechanical prime and our plumbing prime, there wasn't really reason to do that. You'll see the ceiling out in certain areas of the building where we're doing pipe replacement, but there was just no reason to really take it out throughout the school because it'll try to leave a little bit nicer of a school. And as we, you know, take over those areas to do work for the schedule, we could just do the corridor work at the same time. That way we're not, you know, it just leaves a better environment for the students as long as possible. And then the other items, we have a badging process in place for all the construction workers, so that way, you know, that we've shared with the administration today now to, you know, to keep the building secure. And then, that's it.
Does anyone on the board have any questions?
How many workers are running around here now and how many will be here once the school year starts?
Right now, we have about six for Lowbar, two for electrical, two for our mechanical, and plumbing's kind of in and out with two. It'll probably ramp up about another 10 to 15 people. When the annex starts, then you'll see another large influx of people as well.
What is the badging process?
Everyone is issued a construction badge that does not have a Penn Trafford badge. A couple people, the head of each prime contractor has this so they have access to the building and a key, that we took care of, which is Bracco. Everyone else has a construction badge, which I sent Scott and Tony up. They can send out a copy to everybody to see. When they come in, they have the same Penn Trafford regulations, they have to show proof of their clearances. They've submitted all of them.
That's a question.
And they issue it, once we prove that, and actually our site work contract wanted to start last week, we didn't allow them to start until today because they didn't have the proper paperwork.
May I just ask, I come from a little security, what's, what's the process then as the folks are on site, job-wise? Who's verifying that they are who they are?
When they come in.
Because you're not here every day, are you?
No. Patricia Metz is our site manager and she's here every day. If she is not here, myself or Matt Dickovich.
So there's someone from your group here every day?
There's someone from our group here every day.
And you're around and checking to see, my concern is, is that they have access to children?
Oh, absolutely. So what's.
So that they have the proper clearances and.
Yes.
There is a distinction between construction zones and where students are, and that will be clearly marked and students and construction are not to mix and cross paths, not to say it's not ever going to happen, but we've done our best to eliminate that.
Yeah, and we, and what they get issued is, you'll see them issued with a temporary construction badge when they first come on site. We take their photo, required to bring a photo ID so they are who they say they are. And as, either the clearances get submitted right away, or we have proof that they're submitted and then as they come in, we check every single one that comes in. If we do have questionable ones, questionable offenses, we would take them to you, you know, because you have the final say in that.
And where are we, sorry, I'm grassing, but. Hey, no. What are we doing with the smoking piece? How's that being managed? Because I'm sure there's folks that come on board.
There's no, it's a school property. We told them right off the bat, it was in their contract, that there's no smoking, tobacco products on site. If you, if anyone sees them, please let us know, remove that person. And then as we have all their clearances, they'll get a photo ID construction badge that they'll have.
And you'll be here every month, you'll have to report.
Yeah, absolutely. Unless I'm sick like Hank. It won't be.
Special note, the library is scheduled to get started here at the end of this month, so we will have our last board meeting here next week and then we will move into the cafeteria probably for the remainder of the year, just so everybody knows where, where and what's happening with the board meetings. August 12th, we also have the naming rights ceremony and kickoff and at the same time, we're going to do a groundbreaking at August 12th at 7 o'clock, right, Dr. Harris?
7 o'clock.
At the high school, so you're all welcome to show up for that.
Carrie's just shared with me too, that you said you have additional security on hand?
Yes, we do have a security guard. It's going to be here all day to help with all the commotion, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Nate.
And as far as moving our meetings, I know, Mr. Benson, you said we had some concerns. As long as I got those items, it would.
Just the acoustics are going to be much more, it's going to be a little bit of an issue. Nothing we can't figure out, though. It's a big deal.
Because I do have, a lot of members of the community really appreciate the fact that the meetings are being taped, so I just want to make sure that they're being taped and you can hear them.
Yeah, nothing we can't handle.
I appreciate it. Thank you. Introduce Joan. She's going to actually, winner, you might notice Brett's on off. Joan is actually the assistant business manager. She's actually, does a great deal of behind-the-scenes, payroll, attendance, all the records, all the healthcare insurance. It's nice to actually see her at a meeting because to get her on, I'm sure she's happy to be here too.
Thank you for having me.
But she's, introduce our next presenter.
Okay. For the bond presentation, we have two people. We have Christopher Brewer from Dinsmore and Antonio Macedi from PNC.
Good evening, all. And I thought the best way to handle this evening would be I'll run through, basically it's an update of what you've been seeing as far as completion of the funding of the project and then have Chris come up and kind of walk through the schedule of next steps. So, and really, since we've reviewed this and gone through, we've really been very fortunate as far as the interest rate environment is concerned. I know we've had the interim meetings where we've discussed the potential of rates going up. You hear the talk through all the news sources, the media, that all signals are saying that these, that low rates can't last forever. They are eventually going to go up. We're starting to see some upward pressure from the economy. But at the same time, what was not presented and not predicted and never can be, is basically anything in the geopolitical space. And we all know what's been happening, obviously in the Middle East. We all know what's been happening with the Ukrainian situation. And when things like that occur, we continue to see is what is dubbed a flight to quality. And that means investors want to see something safer with their money, where they once thought maybe Ukrainian, something in that, in that new kind of forming Eastern European and the spinoffs from the Russian economy, can we find some growth there? Can we find a good place to invest there? Well, you see something like the conflict breakout and all those investors pull out and they need somewhere to put that money in the short term and they find the best security has been, continues to be, the US investment, the US Treasury, as well as any type of fixed income being produced from a United States economy, all the way down to the municipal bond level. So with that being said, I think we can quickly flip through and what we have, starting on page one, is the options that we kind of saw last time. Do you want to go ahead and take the remainder of the project and get it financed at the current interest rate levels, or do you want to continue to break off a smaller piece and then wait? And one of the big reasons why the initial, excuse me, the initial financing was done was the board was still trying to weigh, smaller project, a little more involved project. That worked in the district's favor. The second borrowing was, again, that same decision. But by then, the decision was, we are going to chase after the larger project. We're going to go that route as long as we can keep the financing at a consistent level of, as where we've been with our debt. And that was able to occur. So the second borrowing, again, was brought in place, take advantage of a shorter call, more advantageous rates at that point in time last December. And it was a case of, do we want to take it all, or do we want to wait till we really do have final bids and a final project number so we don't have to miss borrow, if you will, either overborrow or underborrow and cause a smaller borrowing that may be a little less efficient if the project borrowing came up $800,000 short of what you needed when final bids came in. Conversely, you didn't want to borrow $35 million if the, if the project bid came in at 33, we have $2 million that we didn't need to borrow. So the decision was made then, let's, let's take another piece until in the springtime when we get our final bids. So now that we have those final bids and we have a fairly certain target as that project number is concerned, now that decision really is in front of the board. Do we want to finalize all the borrowing that's remaining on the project, or we still have that option again, where you could borrow another chunk, approximately nine and a half million, right now, this year within calendar 2014, and then take a smaller piece again in, after the new year starts, calendar 15, January, February timeframe, and go ahead and lock in the remainder that way. That option is still in front of the board and that's, that's what we'll review here quickly this evening. The first scenario is if the district did decide, let's just go ahead and lock in rates. Let's not take that risk. We know what, what our project is going to cost us. Let's go ahead and borrow the remainder. And as you can see, it is still advantageous, the district still has the ability to lock in the debt service at its current debt service level, its current equivalent within the budget, and still have the ability to start tearing down the debt service towards the back end of the maturities so that there is room for the future. And we haven't deviated from that structure. Flipping to page two, you can see some of the numerics there that basically shows where the debt service would be. Your existing, the new money debt service of the new issue laid on top and then what the net number is. And off to the right, you can see kind of the accumulation of all the different borrowings that you've done for the project, the 2012, the 2013, both from the bond side or the sources of funds and then the uses, the net proceeds that have gone to fund the total project. And please, if there are questions as I go, do not hesitate to, to stop me. And in this scenario, I think the high points here are again, you, this issue would be about just short of 12.8 million given current market conditions, current pricing structures. And that would complete the borrowing to, to basically accompany the 2012 proceeds, the 2013 proceeds and build it all the way up to the final project level. Flipping to page three, you can now see another layering occur of two issues instead of just one completion issue. And as I stated a little bit earlier, the district did some leases during 2014, which would bring your bank qualified limit down a little bit. So this issue would be basically nine and a half million, give or take, to allow you to take advantage of that bank qualification all the way up to that level. And then you would complete, and then the darkest shade of blue would be an issue done in 2015, most likely right after the turn of the calendar year to take advantage of the bank qualification status there that we've spoke of multiple times. And if you can flip to page four, you'll see that now there's two issues broken out there instead of just the one, a 2014 and a 2015. And what you would see there is a 2014 issue, 9.4 million, and then a completion bond issue of approximately 3.4 million. And the combination of those two, done on a bank qualified basis each, would get you to your final project deposit. And again, one more thing on page three before I forget, it's still that same structuring where we're going to stay at the district's debt service equivalent out through 2025 and then tier it down as you go out towards the final term of borrowing for the project. Any questions on the structuring?
What would be the reason for the two, to try and get better rates again? Because you're going to pay more for the issuance because you're going to do it twice.
That's exactly right. Is to try to take advantage of two things, the spread in interest rates as well as the shorter call. And I'll actually get to that on page five, which if we could jump there, perfect timing. These are the questions that have always been there for the district as far as, what are the most impactful considerations? The final scope and cost of the project, which we've talked about. Do we have a final number yet? Are there going to be significant adjustments as we go before we borrow? I think the district's already answered that, you know, and that's why you've done the compartmentalized borrowings to this point. That's a big reason behind that. Another one is budgetary phase in, is that required? Can the budget handle the new debt service all in one bite or does it need to be phased in over multiple issuances? In the district's case, because of its very benevolent existing debt structure where the old debt actually has, will be rolling off of the books in this fiscal year 1415, that allowed all this new debt to be layered on at exactly the same level. So you didn't have that concern of needing to phase it in or borrow it in chunks because that was the only way to increase and fit it in the budget. The district was able to do that and maintain its existing debt service level. So that wasn't a concern. Now, the next three are the items for the board to focus on and think about as they make this decision. Interest rate factor number one, bank qualified versus non. As we've talked about, typically there's a benefit for investors from a financial institution standpoint who buy municipal debt. It's a carrying benefit for them from a tax purpose and they like to go out and because of that benefit, they like to go out and buy tax exempt issues from municipal issuers. There are times however, when they're full, their appetite is full and they don't want any more of that debt or they, they can't carry any more of that tax exempt debt. They don't get a benefit from buying the next level. So at that point in time, where there's an interest rate spread, that narrows to zero. So right now, there is a spread, but that could fluctuate as we go towards the end of the year. If enough of these banks, financial houses actually have gotten to their limit, that we could see that spread come down. So right now however, there is still a spread and that's why we wanted to show you both. Interest rate factor number two is just the sheer risk of waiting. Do we want to take advantage, which we'll see on a later slide? Do we want to take advantage of rates now and not take that risk? Or do we want to take that bite and take risk on, on some component of it like we've done to this point? Do we feel very fortunate that we haven't seen a significant major spike in interest rates where it's gone above our affordability or gone above where it's been predicted? To this point, the 12 issue, the 13 issue have all fallen within that. Just, I put a note on there that if you were to take the bank qualified two issue approach, you would be taking risk on approximately 3.4 million or 10 and a half percent of the overall borrowing is what you would be taking the remaining interest rate risk on. So, you know, if you were, had to made that decision on 25% of the borrowing, 50% of the borrowing, that's I think a lot more to digest as far as risk is concerned as opposed to something at the 10% level. Again, not a recommendation so to speak, you know, that's, that's a decision for the board based, based on these factors, but it is something to consider that it is, you're taking interest rate risk on a much lower component of the project at this point in time. If you were to take a nine and a half and a three and a half finish. The last piece, which is something that we've brought to the board each time, and the difference between bank qualified, non-bank qualified besides just rates, is the call feature. Bank qualified issues typically carry a five-year optional redemption, which is what the district has on its 12 and 13. So if there's an option to refund, that can come sooner. If there is another revenue source and a decision to start to retire bonds earlier and lower debt, annual debt service, that can be done in a shorter period of time versus the typical non-bank qualified issue, which has a 10-year call period on it. However, in speaking with our trading desk, right now, you can see, we've seen non-bank qualified issues go out there for, with an eight-year call. Something shorter than 10, obviously a little longer than five, but there can be, when you adjust that call feature, investors want paid for the potential of the bonds being pulled from them sooner since it is fixed income and they want compensated in rates. So to go from a 10-year call to an eight-year call, investors may want 20 basis points, they may want 30, they may only want 15, they may want nothing. They may say, you know what, these bonds, you know, may or may not get called for me anyway. I'm okay with it. Let's negotiate the rate. Right now, our desk is saying that depending on how you're priced and how far out your bonds go after the call, they may not, an eight-year call and a 10-year call may price pretty close to one another. Right now, they're saying, again, with the amount of bonds that you would have after a 10-year call, only out, going out to 2031, you would have a 10-year call out to 2024. If you would shorten it to eight years, most investors may say, you know, maybe five basis points. So that's something to think about. That's something we won't know until we actually get closer to pricing as to what that call value it would be priced at. But again, another thing to think about. If you do the bank qualification, you get the five-year call. If you go the non-bank qualified, finish it all right now, eight to 10-year call is, is going to be the norm. And just, I don't want to flip through these pages. You've seen page six each time. The main highlight on page six is if you follow the graph at the top, that's the interest rate proxy, one of the interest rate proxies for tax exempt municipal bonds in the United States. The hard orange line is where has that average rate been on that index, the past 52 weeks? The green line is the movement of the week to week and where it's been. And as you can see, that spike that occurred last summer because of the Fed speak, they thought the economy had turned, they were going to start unwinding their stimulus. And then since then, we've seen interest rates tick back down and actually flatline a little bit here through 2014 because of what we talked about earlier on. The economic numbers that everybody wanted to push didn't say exactly what everyone thought they would say or what they would indicate as far as employment figures, as far as GDP growth, and then the geopolitical concerns around the globe. They've kept rates low, lower I should say. So you can see that it's still below where we've been in the past 52 weeks as far as the average interest rates are concerned. So again, been very fortunate with the interest rate environment for the district's borrowings. Page seven is just again, some light reading. If you want to see what is being forecast out there, this is straight from our economics department with PNC. And what I would highlight there is if you look under current rates, the 10-year US treasury on the third line down there in that middle matrix, that's currently hovering right around a 2.5%. Based on what they're interpreting from economic signals, from what they're hearing out of the Fed, our economics department is saying by the first quarter of 2016, interest rates will basically rise by a full percentage point. You can see that 350 under Q1 16 to the far right side. Quarter one of 2015, basically we'd be at about a 50% increase is what they're saying. Again, that's just their predictions, that's not fact. Just what they're reading, what they're interpreting, and that's what they're projecting out. So again, it's something to think about when we're taking that, that thought process of, do we borrow, take another small chunk and then finish it in 15? Or do we want to wrap the project up right now and lock in interest rates? So with that being said, the last page really to focus on, and it's really just a comparison of where the district has been borrowing. On page eight, this is where United States tax exempt bonds get traded off of. It's an index called the MMD AAA index or yield curve. And what I've done is shown the district where it's borrowed, where rates are today and what the 10-year average is. So the hard red line being the 10-year average, you can see where that is. When the district borrowed its first component of this project in 2012, that's indicated by the orange line. And that was basically historical lows on that orange curve. We had that uptick last year unexpected because of the Fed speak, because of investors pulling their money out of fixed income, waiting for the equities to turn around, waiting for a higher rate, thinking that everything was turning around on a dime. The blue line indicated where the district borrowed last December. But again, where it borrowed it, it truly only borrowed out to the 18-year part of that curve. So it still was borrowing at significantly less than the 10-year averages. So again, another very benevolent interest rate environment to borrow in. And now you can see the green line in the middle, that's where we are today. So I just wanted to present all those factors to the district as they consider the decision as to, again, we know we're now with a more definitive project number. We know where we're at, where we want to be. And where are interest rates today? Now it's, do we want to continue that, that same pattern where we've been taking a bank qualified chunk each year until we get to the smallest piece and finish it and take advantage of any rate spread that may exist and a five-year call option as opposed to 10? Or do we want to go ahead and say, look, we've, we've been fortunate to this point. Interest rates are lower again, we should just jump in with the rest of it. Again, that's a, that's a decision between the district and its administration and for items to think about that we've listed here. But with that said, I will ask Chris to talk about next steps and the timeline.
Excellent. Listening to his presentation, a lot of it was on one hand, but then on the other, that's because he's taking classes at law school tonight. Not really. I think he's done a nice job of laying out for you what you have to consider. You now have your bids. If you think you really know your number and you don't think there's a lot of room to worry about or a lot of, a lot of change is going to happen, then if you want to get it wrapped up, you can wrap it up and it's a good interest rate market. We had that conversation with Brett a week or so ago and yet as we went through that conversation, I think he began to be interested in and thinking about the redemption right. And so although I'll let him speak to you whenever he's back and so forth, there was an inclination, I think in his mind, to go ahead and split it one more time to get the chance of better lower interest rates from bank qualified and to have this other tool in your tool bag of managing the debt because you'd be able to always redeem it and you can call it in, refund it or something as early as possible each time. But that's not to say that if you feel you're close enough and you're kind of ready to get it done and, you know, we're great guys, but you've seen us enough throughout the last couple of years, then that's fine. Brett did ask us to go ahead and get a resolution draft for consideration next week and do what we've done in the past and that is pass the not to exceed resolution. And it would be our recommendation to put into a sort of maximum number here that would cover one more completion borrowing all at one time. And thereby enable you to look at this information, not have to make a decision tonight, but to start working yourselves to that decision as to whether you like to sell just the full completion financing or another $9 million chunk with another piece to come next year. If you do that, I might gently suggest something different than what Tony said, which is you wouldn't have to rush in January to do the rest of it, not unless you were worried about the interest rate environment. You could let this project really kind of get on its feet and get down the road a ways so that when you come back with that last $3 million, you'll really know because it's some change orders that came through or something that the advisors, construction managers telling you that in fact it needs to be, you know, 4.9 or 3.2 or some, whatever that number is. If you want to manage the debt to the right size, that's a consideration. If you're not too worried, you know, you have other resources or you feel that these bids and these contractors are going to control, it's your call. None of this is legal.
Did you discuss that last option with Brett too? Just from Grandma's and he still felt that the other situation was better?
I think so. Yeah. But, but you know, he should speak to that. We don't want to put words in his mouth. I actually, it was funny, when we got on the call together, I already thought he would want to see it, wrap this up, put it away, know that it's done. I think maybe you thought that way too. But as it unfolded, he, I think it was the five-year call from his company, his mom.
I think the call and as we talked about, that it was the interest rate risk that the district was bearing was on 10% of the overall financing as opposed to some larger number where it truly was putting the district at greater risk of rates going higher in a short period of time. And I'll just add very quickly is that I did sensitize the numbers in the, in the second borrowing, the second scenario to show that rates would not remain stagnant on that $3 million piece. I actually increased rates by 50 basis points in that scenario and, and basically to show that you can still meet the exact same curve as borrowing all at once, even if rates would rise 50 basis points on that second piece, on that $3 million piece and still provide the district that exact same consistent debt service level as well as that declining slope at the end. So I, I apologize that I forgot to mention that, but I did sensitize that second scenario.
So you've got some questions?
I have a question, not a call, question, comment. If I look at these two bar charts, it seems to me the second scenario, we actually have more money available to us 17 years out. If I'm looking at 2031, our debt level is actually a little bit less than the first scenario. If I read these numbers correctly and trust me with my vision, I look at some of these numbers, they're a little too small for me to read.
Yeah, I apologize.
So I'm trying to think I'm reading them. All right. I, I think in the first scenario, it looks like we have about 1625 left in 2031. And in the other scenario, I'm getting about 1400.
That's correct. There's about a $200,000 difference in that last year. And that's again, that's just a function of the bank qualified rates being lower than the non-bank qualified rates right now. So your interest expense is a little less over the life of the issue, over the life of the borrowing. And you're able to fit under the bank qualified because of the lower interest rates, you're able to amortize a little more principal sooner, which means less interest expense on the back end. And then it also is a function of, of making sure that your tiering is equal increments as you tier down to that last maturity. So that's why you see that difference. And that's really, it's a function of the interest rates being slightly lower right now for bank qualified for the smaller pieces. But you are seeing that correctly.
So those, those numbers do include a, obviously a second issuance.
A jump.
That's correct.
Which you'll still see at 200, was it 227 or are you figuring it out?
Yes, 227 cheaper right now to just do the double issuance, even with your.
Even, and even with the duplicative cost of issuance.
And your bump in the rate.
And the bump in the rates.
I think that, and Chris and I had that notion that that was really kind of the, the twofold approach, I think, as Brett started to really think about it was, do I still want to maintain that five-year call versus an eight or a 10? And.
And do I also see a net benefit in rates right now? And then, you know, you'd only be taking interest rate risk on, you know, 3.5 million as opposed to, say, 15 or 20 million.
I guess, I don't know if anybody else has any more comments?
What did we do on last bond issue 20 years ago? Did we spread it out over a four-year period? Do you recall how we did that? Tom Smith directed us through all that. He told us when to put it down and when to let it hold off. Sometimes we did some splitting to let your ramp-up debt service, that you weren't going to have to make that payment on the entire amount of debts for all at once. And next year, you would borrow some, start to get the budget adjusted, borrow again, adjust for that. That's why we did some of those in the past, plus the bank-qualified rates. You're in a nice position with your debt, that you have your existing debt tailing off so well, that as Tony said, you can take this on and keep it, you and Steve, and nicely be healed without needing to do it for that reason. You don't have to do the splitting to work yourself into millage, you're good on millage. Yeah, I think what you're talking about is that there was a ramp-up both by some splitting and in the debt structure to let you guys, you know, get the notes in place, kind of ramp up to that level. We can sometimes minimize the principal payback in the first year or so, and sometimes borrow the interest expense, capitalize the interest for sure time till you're kind of on your feet. Because we did some, I'm doing construction, I mean, it wasn't always done pretty construction. Right, oh, that's right. I mean, it's what you've done to date, I think, is so smart because you were just really keeping the balls in the air, not going out at all. And you could look at the numbers and say, geez, we know two years ago what the rate story, you never write it back down there, should have borrowed it all. But you could have been off in some of the other things, and you'd have been paying all the interest from the debt. Instead, I mean, this is not unlike laddering your investments if you're investing, trying to just average out over time. So you can't make a bad decision right now. You've heard through both sides of it, these observations about cost of issuance, and yet if rates stayed where they are, we're better off in an overall picture in time. But in terms of legalities of it, we'd like to go ahead and get a resolution in front of you for a not-to-exceed amount to cover everything. Tony's obviously begun to work on an official statement, we need to run you through the rating process, get things in order, get the documents prepared before we get in the marketplace. That's still going to consume a couple, three, four weeks. So that if we have a resolution in place, and you guys at the meeting next weekend or any other session, kind of, you know, do the straw vote and say, here's, I would like you to sell the bonds, and then we'll be in a position to get them sold in a good order. Get you either, you know, $30 million in the pot or all.
You might say, say, I'll be here next week, and they actually vote on this, I can give my opinion now, correct? Even though it's not an official vote?
Certainly, you can give your opinion, but it would not be an official vote, yes.
Well, then my official opinion would be scenario two for myself. Thank you.
Anybody else not going to be here next week that wants to make, okay, Scott?
One or two as well.
Okay. Anybody else? We're dropping our class.
The not-to-exceed number, what are you looking for in the resolution for the not-to-exceed number?
Tony will have to do a calculation of all the principal he's going to need to amortize over the period in one or two issues, you know, not to fund all the rest of the project. You might recall, under the way the DCD has interpreted the debt act for us, can't exceed the total borrowing, you say, can't exceed the interest rate, you say, can't exceed the principal set for amortization in every single year. So every single maturity gets pumped up a little bit, and a number that you're going to look at is going to, if you need 12, you're going to see a number in that resolution that's a lot more like 15 or 16. But we'll never borrow more than what you tell us for to do. One nice thing, though, if we do do that not-to-exceed, and Tony and I actually coincidentally have been working on a client right now on this, if we go ahead now and put a number out that was large enough to encompass everything, and yet you say scenario two, we might not need to vote again, we might then have enough legal authorization in place even for that ramp-up financing, and we were starting to talk at meetings, and we didn't even know what we're doing. But we might now have the official action on the books in both borrowings in scenario two, under that one master resolution.
And if I recall, I think for that $9 million issue last year, you did about 12 million in not-to-exceed, and wasn't an eye-popper. Wait a minute, I thought we agreed to nine, why is it 12? It's for all the reasons that Chris just said. So I believe, actually, I think we used somewhere around that number for 2012 as well as for 2013. You put your not-to-exceed out there for approximately 12 million with the full understanding that you were only going to borrow about 9.3 or 9.4 under that resolution.
So not-to-exceed sets a parameter, but the vote still has to come in on the final tally for the actual...
That's correct, for the actual...
You might envision not-to-exceed maybe 12 million?
If you say that you're sure about scenario two, and you only want to vote each one of these as the steps come along, then we probably would be at 12, and we'd just do a scenario two financing for nine and a half. But if you want, we can go ahead, we're close enough to know the final numbers, to put out a larger number into the resolution so that then we could do both series under it, even if you choose scenario two. Doesn't matter, I mean, we're having to come to meetings. About all you're really saving, I suppose, is the legal ads that go in the paper each time we do these. A little bit on filing for the DCD. It's more of how you sort of want to wrap this up. But if you say tonight, you're sure scenario two, and you want to see a 12 million dollar number, so you feel like you're taking each step, you can do that. If you want to do 18, then we have room to work. One other thing about that principal per year, you know, the amortization on bonds is not unlike your home mortgage, and as rates move, the principal amortization moves. So Tony, not knowing where rates are going to fall, you know, lower rates push up principal in the early years, and bonds drop in the later years, and obviously now that the rates go up. So that's why every year's got to have spacing.
That's right. Especially the way that the Department of Community and Economic Development looks at this through the Local Government Unit Debt Act on that maturity-by-maturity basis. You really don't have a predictable spacing as to what you would need because they do in fact look at it every single par amount in every single year that you're borrowing. And they put in there, in the legislation, that it is, from a statutory basis, it's principal, it's interest rate, it's annual debt service, and it's term, and it's total principal. So you're really, you're boxed in on all sides. So in order to make sure that you didn't pass a resolution, that when it comes time to go to market, the way that rates have moved or the pricing structure has changed based on investor demand, is like, whoa, you guys really wanted to borrow nine, but we can only borrow seven. And if you don't want to borrow seven, and you want to borrow the full nine, we'd have to come back, pass a new resolution that would fit under, based on those prevailing market conditions, fit under the state code. With providing enough cushion, that prevents that from happening. Plus, it gives you the timing. It allows you to think through a little better, and it allows you to also give kind of the thumbs up, thumbs down as to whether or not to enter the market or accept the bond proposal that gets presented at the time of pricing.
I would authorize enough to allow the entire completion financing to get done, whether it's scenario two or one. And the other reason I do that is, just what if something happens again in the global economy, something happens in some other country that drives the market? And it drives rates down, for example, such that you say, we cannot go long going back to scenario one, that, you know, let's just go ahead and get it, my goodness, these rates, you know, we can't pass it up. And I don't want to have to come back to say, oh, then we got to vote again. I'd rather you go ahead, have it sort of authorized, stay in touch, and continue to monitor the market and make a good decision, knowing that right now, at least by a couple of hands, scenario two seems to have appeal to you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all, see you next week. This is your last. Until we get to move to January.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Any other matters before the board or any questions for the board?
See you on the board, too.
All right. Hi, next week, under athletics and extracurricular, except for resignations, employee personnel, approve voluntary toshas. And I'm going to turn this over to Tony because it's an action item, it's going to need to vote.
Okay, action, Dr. Costco, athletics and extracurricular.
Thank you, Madam President. Move to employ the following athletic personnel. New employment is contingent upon receipt of all necessary documentation and acceptance of Act 34, 151, and 114 waivers from the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania within 30 days. Dan Miller, head baseball coach, effective immediately.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leonard.
Question being called for. This will be a roll call vote. On favorite emotion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no? Option Carrie, motion Carrie, sorry.
I just want to take a minute, Carrie can introduce Mr. Miller, who I've noticed are patiently sitting over there in the dormitory. I feel they've got a lot of information on bonds.
I want to introduce you all to our new baseball coach here, Dan Miller. Dan?
Thank you. I thought it was important that I be here tonight so that you could all place a face with a name in knowing that what you have moving forward here in the baseball program. And I think it's also important to me tonight that I certainly recognize and thank not only the school board, the administrative staff, and the athletic department for their support in entrusting me to be able to lead the baseball program for your district. I also will tell you that I'll work hard, we'll plan our work accordingly, and we're prepared to put the best product both on and off the field that you can be proud of. Finally, if I may, I'd like to introduce my support team. Who was here tonight, without their support, it wouldn't give me the opportunity to explore the passion I have to teach young men the game of baseball. Please let me recognize my family, stand, this is my son Trevor, my daughter Blake, my daughter Morgan, and my wife, 22 seasons. So I thank them for all their support and all your support as well. Thank you, Coach.
Thank you. All right. Well, wait a minute for Matt.
Of course, you have all kinds of buildings.
Here he comes. Here he comes.
I have such bad allergies, Mike.
I thought we were sending you.
You can meditate.
I should do something, my eyes keep watering on Hank.
It's horrible, my eyes are horrible.
Under budget and finance, approve expenditures relating to the high school renovation for June 2014, acknowledge receipts of PDE's approval of PlanCon Part F construction documents. And I wish Hank was here, but Scott, do you have an update on that?
You know what?
We've been talking about it back in...
PDE did approve, they are accepting applications for new PlanCon submissions, so I guess we'll take that as a good sign. I think they authorized additional $3 million. It doesn't sound like much, is it? $3 million is a small amount. Yeah.
But you know what, the fact that they're now granting more or granting new projects that come into the pipeline, is a kind of a good sign?
I will tell you this, Hank and I did have a conference call from PDE, the guy who runs the PlanCon department, and he was, he felt very confident when he talked to us that at some point he believed that we would be getting the money. And he's not going to guarantee that, obviously, but, you know, it may not be this year, it might not be next month, but some year, sometime down the road, it might be five years from now, we will get some money. He seemed pretty confident of that, but again, we'll see what happens.
You know that there are some completed projects around the state, they completed, and they still have money reimbursed that they've not been seeing to get. I know.
We were, what was it, 54th on the list, paving or?
I thought we were 160.
160 something.
I lost. Lost. After 10, Nick, after 10, we're down there, but all right. Approved renewal agreement with the Sarp and Company, approved resolution authorizing the 2014 general obligations bond issue, kind of discussed that tonight. Approved the school resource officer program agreement for 2014, 2015. We wanted to update that agreement because even though in our prior agreement, it says at the end of each year, that agreements between, we have the right to kind of negotiate with the admin and the township, but we are changing the amount to actually reflect the true costs of the SRO officer. And that's one of the reasons why we kind of wanted to approve that agreement. And just to bring it to everyone's attention, that this change, but it's such a necessary program, I've been working with Chief Otto for several years on this, and the benefit of having an SRO is priceless, and I'm glad that, I would definitely strongly recommend that we continue the service.
Is there any grant money available from the state to help pay for that?
There is grant money every year, and we're going to have to write the grant as for the safe school. We did write it before, but the time when we wrote it, we were knowledgeable, I think they took the most needed school district. Fortunately for us, we have excellent records when we do our entity or safe school report. Unfortunately, it doesn't always tell us the most grants. That being said, some of the other school districts that have similar data to us, Franklin Regional, for one, they actually did receive a grant from them, and that was prior to that, so...
Oh, prior to that, isn't it?
Prior to that, and so it just seems that if there's grants out there, always take a chance, always write them, you never know, it might be your time. But, and that's what I learned from that, so we're going to just continue writing grants and see. It's actually a good valuable program. Approved contract with WIU for E-Academy program. As you recall, we was the only school district that we kind of was not in the E-Academy because we didn't have a high number of our kids who were cyber school, we have various number of cyber school education programs who wanted to join, come back to PT through our own E-Academy. Scott and I sent our notices this year, and we set up something with Ali Arrendes from the Westmore and IU, and we actually had, last week I reported four, but we actually had another person call, so we might have five students. So after three students attending the program, every student's about 5,800 average savings for the district. So if that's two extra students, that's $12,000 or so. Currently, I believe we had, I was off on the other, I hope I'm not wrong, about 60 students who are cyber school.
I think that's...
So it's actually needed. And finally, approved purchase at EdInsight instructional management system from Onhand Schools. I'd like Scott to do a demonstration next week on that, but do you want to kind of briefly talk about it, Scott, or?
You know, we had a representative from Onhand Schools come in this week and present to us on everything that Onhand Schools can do for us. And the biggest piece that it does, it's really a data management system, that's the biggest piece that we'd like to see that it do for us. It essentially takes all of our data, our PSAs, scores, Keystone, DIBBLES, SAT, PSAT, any piece of data that's out there, and puts it into the software package, and it gives us administrators, principals, teachers, the ability to drill down and really look into the data to see where every child is, where they're at, where they need to go, and how to remediate and target the areas of deficiency so that we can move those kids forward. So that's just one piece of it. There's a lesson planner component of it. It also has the ability to house our curriculum and do the, help us create performance assessments, summative assessments for the different benchmark things that we do with kids. But it's a really robust package and system that the principals just fell in love with it whenever we saw the presentation, that this is what we need. The problem that we have is we have all this data out there, and we have these spreadsheets, and we don't know what the heck to do with it and how to decipher it. This software takes that data, analyzes it, deciphers it, and spits it out for you in a way that you could actually read and understand it and know what to do with it. So we think it's a valuable piece, so we've been asking you to approve that next week.
And we've been looking at it for, two years ago, we didn't just jump into it, because when it first was presented to us two years ago, there was a couple components, we had data, but it didn't have as much other options with it. And the other options is finally what really brought us to our attention, as Scott said, there's so much more than just the data component, that we were really impressed. A lot of our district and our goals that we want to present to the board, considering with depth of knowledge, dealing with student learning outcomes, dealing with the curriculum, is now so embedded into the Onhands program that it actually made it more attractive. So when we saw the presentation again, I think it's, there are updates, and with their changing in our requirements, I think it's a better fit. So it's something that we weren't, we didn't jump at, we kind of waited and...
So right now, Scott, if, say I wanted to get scores from my oldest son from when we first started testing through, you guys have to pull them from different...
Well, we have files all over the place.
So this is also be a good tool for parents from a reporting perspective, too?
Oh, absolutely, we can print reports and spit that out to parents. We could have your child's name and have all the data there from every assessment that they've taken, local assessments, national assessments, state assessments, and it's all in one piece right there for you. It's really, and that's what teachers are going to do, they're going to take that data, and now they can see what they're getting, you know?
And even if it pinpoints it down, it doesn't just say, oh, your child needs help with math, or your child doesn't need help, needs help with fractions, it pinpoints it down to your child doesn't understand how to add mixed fractions. I mean, that concrete goes right to the specific skill. with math, or your child doesn't need help, needs help with fractions, it pinpoints it down to your child doesn't understand how to add mixed fractions. I mean, that concrete, it goes right to the specific skill, not the broad, not the general, just the specific. Helps out too.
Dr. Harris, is that a budgeted item?
It's a budgeted item, but since it's over $10,000, you have to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Under Buildings, Ground, and Safety, approved list of substitute custodians for 2014, 2015, approved replacement of four sets of bleachers at Penn Middle School Gymnasium. I know we shared information with you on the gymnasium, we had two accidents past year, one sort of minor, but one major, and I know during our safety committee and during our safety walkthroughs, there was a need for safety reasons. And after the reports, and Kerry, do you have any other information about that?
Yeah, with the, with the use of that facility as well, too, I think, you know, it's necessary that, as like you mentioned, our safety committee has addressed this, but it's necessary that we take some action and address that area as possible.
So once ordered, Kerry, when would these be put in place?
Well, we've been in contact with Ikenlov, and with a rush, they could do it in October, mid-October, it's a couple-week project, and that's, that's because of the time it would take in order to manufacture the product and actually fit them into place, so. But that's, you know, that's pending, too, that we can give them a decision here in, you know, very due time.
Would that be the removal of these bleachers now?
Yes.
That's our decision, but I think that's the, that's the recommendation that we want to remove it now.
Based on replacing it for safety reasons, I would get them out there.
We can do that with in-house staff, or that would be part of this?
Already in-house staff.
Our guys can do it. Our guys can do it.
How much places the, the amount, I wish the amount was on there, but I know what the, I know what the class is, do you want to?
Well, there was a cost for them to demo them, or there was, am I right?
There was no demo cost included on our bid.
Kerry and I said, let's just not add it, because we knew our guys could do it.
That's what I thought, okay.
And we said, any money we can save, save it.
And it's a Co-Stars price, so it's, it's a set price.
State contractor. Are these bleachers, is this proposal for manual or electronic?
Electronic. There, there are no longer, you know, manual bleachers. It'll be pretty much just like the main gym with a plug-in and push of a button, and that way you're not risking somebody doing it manually and them not being properly placed, which is what we're trying to address, probably why we came to where we're at right now, too.
If there is a concern with the safety at the start of the school year, we could simply push them all in to our guys. I don't know if we're able to just, you know, demo them before school starts. Push them all in and not even permit them to be used, you know, lock them in place, but we'll try to get as much stuff as we can.
The price for one set was $22,000.
Yes, roughly.
And if we would do both sets, it would be $34. And you said the trouble, we just didn't one set, what happens with the other set? We couldn't, obviously we couldn't use them, but.
Yeah, we have to either replace them or just have them removed and use benches there. We cannot, they can't be used, and really, all they're used for right now are during the time that there's groups in there, kids are sitting on them, and part of the problem that it becomes is when kids climb up them, that's how they deteriorate over time. It breaks the structure inside the, especially the old wooden bleachers, so that's one thing you want to do. When you get these new ones, they can't be pulled out manually halfway, where there's a couple bleachers open, and then it's closed, and then people, so it prevents a lot of that. Like what we did in the main gym, when we have them pushed in, I mean, we put signage up, but we have covers and tarps covering the step area, so people can't actually climb up them, and that prevents a lot of that, too.
You should get them out of there, because you leave them in here, and you're kind of against the wall. Kids still will climb up them, okay?
Absolutely. We'll get them out soon.
Mr. Tucker, Mr. Brass, go back there.
We'll talk to him tomorrow.
Yes.
Under Employee Relations Negotiations Transportation, approved list of bus drivers and substitutes for 2014, 2015. Under Food Service, approved list of cafeteria personnel and substitutes for 2014, 2015. Adopted free and reduced lunch program resolution, approved milk suppliers for 2014, 2015. Under Personnel and Curriculum, designate official ratings for 2014, 2015. Approved teacher assignments, 2014, 2015. Approved substitute teachers, support personnel, 2014, 2015. Approved intern assignments, issued professional contracts, employee personnel, approved student handbooks, accept reservations, and approved leave requests. Under Policy Public Relations, Legislative Title II, Accept and Foul Information Committee Meeting Minutes of June 2, 2014. Approved Revised Policy 137 and Administrative Regulations 137 AR Regarding Home Education Programs. Remember, we did that already, but under the legalities, we have to do it twice. Tentatively approved Revised Policy 248, unlawful harassment, revised policy 249, the bullying policy. Were always required by state law and the safety committee to update that every three years. We chose to look at it closely this year and make sure we understood the policy and make sure, Scott, is there some changes you want to take notes of?
Oh, we just made some, some minor changes that make it administratively easier to manage and easier to process any kind of incidents that we have. We've clearly defined what bullying is, so there's no confusion as to what is the definition of bullying and how it's, how it's handled.
And that's something, it's in all the handbooks, and as always, the teachers, administrators do go over the policy. Appoint PSBA voting delegates. Under Taxes, Insurance, Censes, there were nothing to report at that time, and that's a labor to tone, the reputation of visitors.
All right, it's that time of night. It's now time for audience recognition. The following rules are in effect. You must state your name, address, and any group affiliation. Your statement will be limited to five minutes in duration. All statements shall be directed to the president, and no participant may address or question a board member individually. I may interrupt your statement if your statement is too lengthy, personally direct, abusive, obscene, irrelevant. I have a list of residents who wish to address the board. Your name will be called in the order in which you signed up. Hey, Sally Bradley.
8:47, state law 130, in Level 3. And again, thank you for the opportunity to speak. I had a concern when I read an article within the last month, and it's been surfacing various times, and that's about whether or not the school district should be supporting PTARC and be involved. And just to go back, when PTARC was conceived, it was concerned that other municipalities were receiving funding from, basically DCNR, but from the state. And as we looked around, Penn Trafford wasn't getting anything. And I'm not necessarily saying the state should be giving communities money, but if they're giving it to other people, I want my share. And incidentally, I'm not solicited by anybody to be speaking here tonight, it's purely me. And the two things I'd like to point out, number one, we did it so we could get money, and we've been successful with that. I mean, maybe the school district hasn't received money directly, but Manor has, Penn has, Penn Township, Trafford. There's been a lot of money coming into our district, and without the school district, I don't think we'd be getting, we wouldn't have the money to operate PTARC, I don't think. And these municipalities make up the school district, so yeah, we are getting funding for us. And I think Mr. Petrucci will agree with me that PTARC was formed so we get our share of money. The other reason I'd like to support PTARC, and I don't support everything we do, but I don't support everything that a lot of people do. I don't know how many of you are familiar with Dr. William Glasser, who developed the idea of reality therapy, control theory, and he also authored a book on schools without failure. And back in the 90s, he spoke here at Penn Trafford on an in-service training. He's come up with four basic needs that people have. One, and if one of these needs isn't being met, and I can testify this happened in my life, but if one of these needs isn't being met, then something's going to go haywire in our community or individually. The four needs are sense of belonging, our physical needs, control over our lives, and finally, fun. I think PTARC, through recreational programs, through educational programs, contributes to each of these needs. So the fact that our needs are being met, we're going to be more successful people, I think is a reason to promote PTARC in the school district. Thank you. Sure.
Since you've been on the board before, Sally, for many years, could you elaborate what you mean by we were missing out, or maybe you can, we're missing out on money?
Yeah, other communities were getting money to, communities were getting money, not necessarily the school district, but we looked at the communities here.
You talked about the township itself?
Township, yeah, and Manor, Penn, we weren't getting money to develop any recreational program, or develop any developments or parks.
Did you get money in the beginning to fund it?
No.
I thought you got money that funded Charles, the director's salary.
Well, that, that pays out over a five-year period, but the reason, the biggest reason was to get funds raised.
Yeah.
We, we, nobody, nobody running grants for us.
Right, you know, and.
No grant running at all, and neighboring districts are getting hundreds and hundreds of thousands of dollars every year, every year, and some even a half a million dollars, and Penn Trafford is getting, United Way, about $1,500 a year.
Who championed that cause, Nick? Was this, was it more the commissioners, or was it?
No, no, it started with school board.
It started with Harry Joe Marasty, was it?
Yeah, Dr. Joe Marasty, and I talked to him, and he took the bull by the horns, and he, he pushed it, and we met with township commissioners and council, and we all got together, and he broke the formula down according to population who would pay so much money, and that's when the five-year period came in from DCNR, that they would pay half, and a 20% every year reduction until it went down to zero.
I find it curious that a former superintendent would have spearheaded such a.
But he did.
I'm just saying, because it had, you know, some would believe that PTARC and other organizations have no direct affiliation to the school district, but I find it very interesting, based on that information, that Dr. Marasty is the one who spearheaded this whole thing.
He was asked to do it, and he took the bull by the horns.
And I remember one day, he said, because I talked to him about this a long time ago, he said, you know, we had PTAA, where the kids from Penn Township play baseball, we had LGAA at that time, you know.
Still have it.
Well, no, I'm not saying that you don't, but you had no, there was no organization.
That's true.
That wrapped all the areas where kids lived in our district, where they all could have one central place or one activity, that didn't matter where you lived, that you just lived in the district.
And at that time, we were grown by 1,000 kids.
Yeah.
Population, and he says, there's no, there's no district-wide activities, there's no district-wide programs. He says, and the playground, the coordination of activities in playground, he says, there are none, and there was, everybody did their own little thing, and, but now, you know, the programs are going, the playgrounds, the traffic were loaded this year.
And there were, there was no unity.
That's true, there was no unity. He, he was asked to do it, and he really, he took full charge.
I kind of like how we have the intergovernmental cooperation that we do. It kind of ties everybody together like we are in this community together, so.
And I've said, it's repeated, that's why I hate to keep on repeating, I get like an echo chamber, but every pay that the school district pays out comes right back to the community, nothing ever, ever leaves the school district.
Thanks, Sally.
We're making it a better place, I think, to live.
Well, it definitely enhances quality of life and improves, and increases property value.
And if, you know, those things are good, then it's going to be good for education.
Our property value has gone up.
And we're all tied together.
Yeah.
It's all one.
As I said, we need it for our basic needs. All right. Well, thank, thank you. All right, Bill. Okay, Bill Gordy.
Bill Gordy, 2/5 to go, late here in the city. No! First of all, the problem is supposed to be upon us, because I actually.
I agree with Phil. I, like the rest of the community, received our tax notices in the mail, and I guess my question was, which we're sitting here discussing, is how is funding a non-school-related organization helping kids in the classroom? Can the, can the board explain that to me with, by funding these other organizations, what's that doing for my kids in the classroom? That helping them learn?
I want to know, you, you could, well, Bill, I don't know whether you think about, I'm going to have to clarify myself.
I know you don't like to agree with me, but that's.
I didn't, for PTARC and, and the funding for, for rec commission and the, and the libraries, because I think it all ties in together very well. It's like, you know, some will argue, what do you need sports for? But I think sports in general make a student well-rounded, you know, you learn discipline and teamwork and all that stuff.
So does, so does the board, does the district support the baseball, the soccer, do we give money to them?
You know, just think.
Through the rec programs, yes.
We do give money to the rec boards.
Yes.
So.
Our rec board, they don't give. Yeah, we don't give it out anymore, but we do provide other opportunities for, for students who don't necessarily get involved in anything like that.
There's a, there's a headcount.
Basketball's alone, we get. That's because they have to rent the facility. I mean, you, Trafford may.
Brett, John, do you know how much we give the different rec boards? I mean, it goes by.
No, no, we get, we still get the money, Nick.
Oh, you get the money, okay.
But we don't individually give it out to certain.
Oh, okay, well, we, we.
They had to bring their finances to the board.
Oh, I see, okay, well, no, at Trafford, we, we still distribute it with, you know, with the Halloween parades and the summer playground program, where we, you know, it's distributed evenly. It improves the quality of life, that's your question, and I firmly believe the more active you have kids involved and different things are going on, the less problems they're going to be creating in a community.
And I agree with that.
Well, then we add to it.
Is that the school boards, is that the, is that what school taxes are used for, is to promote these organizations which are not directly affiliated with the school?
Well, yeah. We just always see the school code, I made sure, because, and I'll tell you, when you were sitting, Chuck Corvus is here about, I'll say, three or four years ago, he was president of Township Commissioners, and we were discussing PTARC and everything, and he was a former president of PTARC, and he, and him and his wife are sitting back there, and there were a couple board members, he mentioned one in particular that was objected to that, and after the meeting, he said, hey, Petrucci, experiment. And I says, okay, and I always talk to Chuck, we always shake hands, everything, and he says, he says, you know, it's the obligation of the school district, he says, to help out community recreation, the libraries, and all the, all those community functions. I said, I said, well, I'm trying to get that comment, he says, check the school code. He asked me to check the school code. I relayed that message to Mrs. Zissing, and she sent a copy out there, I think it's page 93 of the school code, am I right about that? And it says that it is the obligation, after two mils.
I don't think it was the obligation as much.
It's not, it's not the obligation.
Obligation, it's the option.
Because, Nick, I did.
I don't know, I wish to have it front right now.
Yeah.
Nick, Mrs. Zissing did ask me to get a count from the other schools in Westmore County, see how many people give to the rec board, and not all, not all schools do. I did submit the chart, and I wish I were brought it, I didn't know there was some people that.
There are some of them, that is correct.
So there are some of them.
But some, again, Hemphill has their own recreation department, so their school district doesn't have to donate to it. Greensburg is the same thing, they trove the same thing. When bigger school districts have their own recreation departments, I mean, bigger communities, they don't have to worry about grant writing.
I do think they sure contribute, so they contribute.
Yeah, I thought they troved it a little bit.
They gave a large amount.
I think.
But that's, it's in the school code, that's obligation was the right word, legally.
I'm saying obligation.
Legally, I should say obligation. Legally, we are permitted to donate.
We're permitted.
And it says, even the parks, it says, mention parks there, too.
Do you have it?
I'm trying to track it down.
So is there, is there a list of organizations which can come to the school district ATM and get money?
The Gordy Foundation can.
What about the Boy Scouts? Can the Boy Scouts come here and say, I want money, up to two mils?
Well, I see, that's, I guess, that's, that's.
Wait a minute, now you're drunk.
You're splitting hairs. You're splitting hairs now. If you're going one way, you got to go the other way. I've got like four more questions I got to ask, it's been a long summer. Yeah. Oh, that's all. Yeah.
I mean, I, I said, I made a statement, though, because I, Bill, before we start looking at finding the services to kids, we got to look at. I'm cutting these types of services. I am a big believer, we cannot hurt the education of our children and continue to give to outside organizations. I mean, I, I feel very strongly about that.
I want to say something about the Boy Scouts, the Eagle Scouts, which is the top level of Boy Scouts, they've done programs for us down at BY Park in Trafford, and we reimburse them every penny of them, so those kids can achieve their Eagle Scouts. And some of the money that goes to the rec board and PTARC comes from the school district.
Yeah.
So indirectly, Bill, they are getting some support.
We've got huge school facilities, too.
Yeah, and Boy Scout, they use school facilities, too, so do the Girl Scouts, I mean, not just the Boy Scouts.
Another problem we also face is we never want to, if you ever stop all funding, it would really damage PTARC, and we're also really damaged libraries. would really damage PTARK, and we're also really damaged libraries.
But if PTARK is, is wanted by the community, then the community will support it. If the community doesn't support it, then that tells you all you need to know about...
Throwing money at PTARK, throwing money at a problem when it's not really supported by the community. If the community wants it, the community will support it. If it, if the community doesn't support it, then it doesn't want it.
We did a survey on that, you know, I think like two years ago, am I right about that?
Yeah, we need a lot of response to...
No number, it was all, the response that we had was all positive.
Okay. Then why do we keep supporting it if the community will...
I mean, there were some people, they just don't, they, indifferent, there was no...
I think we got like only 180 responses.
I would say 300 or so.
No, it could be 300, it's still a low number.
There's a low number, no interest in it. Yeah, Bill...
There's no interest, it's only support...
Using that same logic, how many, how many taxpayers do you think would voluntarily support this school enough to keep it running? The money is extracted from the taxpayers.
Exactly, hence the reason why you get people like me here fussing about what you're doing with my tax money.
Where are they at, Bill?
I don't know.
Where are they at? I see one, Bill, almost all the time, the same person I'm looking at right now.
Exactly.
Yeah, where are they at, Bill? If they're upset with PTARK, an increase in tax like you're saying, where are they at? They should be here, Bill.
Does anybody on the board, does the board ever hear from taxpayers about increasing school taxes?
Sure.
Sure we do.
Yeah, probably we do, but as far as people come, there are probably meetings...
And I told people come, you know I told people come.
And, Bill, you're here all the time, you know what...
What's your attendance at?
And I will tell you that I have had comments about PTARK and not support it. I will tell you that. But I, and I tell people, you have, you just, you know, you got, if you want that statement to be heard, and I tell people on both sides of the fence, then come to the meetings and be heard. And you know, and you should know that I've said that to people.
And, Bill, for, the past two years, we've been talking about a $30, $32 million renovation of this building, which is a big piece of money. How many people you see here, Bill?
Well, that brings in my next question.
Is spending $32 million on this, on the high school, does that screw us down the road for consolidating schools, closing a school, and doing something else?
That's why we started here, because this is where we stay.
Yeah, this is the building, all kids will come to this building.
There's good sound arguments for looking at other schools because they're aged, because of some condition issues.
You worry about tax increase. You worry about tax increase, where you start replacing these old buildings, Bill? Then you may get some people there.
Bill, we're going to have to cut you off. All right, last but not least, Larry Harrison.
I'll tell you what's a real joy coming before this group, I can't help but think that a few years back, when we used to meet down at the admin building, and the meetings lasted to 10:30, 11 o'clock at night, you guys really have it easy now, but anyway, I'm, as you said, Larry Harrison, I'm Shady Drive, Level Green. I'm a member of the PTARK board, and I'm also a Penn Township Commissioner. When I sat here among this group a few years back, there were instances where I was kind of critical of PTARK. Just didn't think that they were doing the job that needed to be done. I have to say that presently, I think PTARK has kind of turned the corner and is doing a pretty darn good job. If you look back like at 2009, which was a pretty good year for PTARK, they had, they had $142,000 plus in program revenue. In 2012, that dropped down to about $97,000, and the board became a little concerned. And we put the executive director and the assistant director on a performance-based compensation plan. Now, they will tell you that that made no difference in the outcome of 2013.
However.
But I will tell you that the, the program revenue increased from the $97,000 up to $110,000. The cost of providing those programs as a percent of revenue dropped to 61% in 2013 versus 86% in 2012. And I know Mrs. Ising is giving you folks numbers, I'm sure, monthly on participation in the PTARK programs, and is continuing to increase in most of the programs here in 2014. So I'm here to ask you if you, as a school board, would continue to provide the residents of the Penn Trafford School District with the opportunity for lifelong learning, for fitness and fun through the implementation of recreational activities, affordable and wholesome. And you say, well, where did you get that? Well, that's basically the mission of PTARK.
That's Joe Marasty.
And we are, at this point in time, as most of you know, the executive director, Shell Cammer, has tendered her resignation. She'll be leaving this, later this year. If PTARK is going to exist, it must have the financial support of the school district. If it does not have it, it's going to wash. And you folks are going to inherit the PTARK building along with about a $60,000 parking lot loan, which I don't think you really want to have to deal with and extend your meeting time another 20 minutes every month to take care of that business. But if we want to continue PTARK, obviously, we're going to need an executive director. We, as the board, do not want to go out talking to potential candidates about PTARK and the future they could have being a part of the Penn Trafford area community, if in fact the chances are that it's not going to exist in another year or two years. Much of its future depends on you, and we have to know what you are going to do if PTARK is going to go forward with looking for a new executive director. And that's something that has to be done sooner rather than later. As Mrs. Ising mentioned, we have a meeting a week from today. At that meeting, we will certainly start to form a search committee, talk about advertising and various, things that may be associated with hiring a new director. Don't put us through that if you guys are going to say, no, we don't want to be a part of that. Now, someone said, well, you know, funding PTARK, is that what we should be doing? Well, I'm going to ask you, anyone who has said that or doubts that, have you talked to people who have gone through some of the PTARK programs? Have they, and ask them, did you learn something? Was this beneficial to you? Has this made you a better person? Ask them. See what you get for responses. They will tell you, I guarantee it, that programs are worth their money. The people that are participating in these programs do pay the cost of the programs. That was one of the things that the board insisted on. But there are administrative costs. The budget for PTARK is a little over $218,000. Intergovernmental funding, that's part of the school board, municipalities and so forth, is about $92,000. So there is money that's coming in through participation, participants in the, in the programs, but it's not covering all of the administrative expenses. And that's where the school district, Penn Township, Trafford, Penn Borough, Manor come into play. That funding is essential if you wanted to have the, have PTARK continue. And so I stand before you as a person who is committed to PTARK, I'm not, you know, I don't agree with everything that has happened or everything that we do. I'm not, my own opinion, I'm not sure we need to be, as a PTARK, a landlord or a property owner. But that will remain to be seen. PTARK does serve the community. We are seeking to have economic development in our, in our area. PTARK certainly is an asset to be able to present when you are talking to businesses as well as individuals about coming to our area. I would, again, just simply say, please make a decision, make it quickly, so that PTARK can either move forward and continue to serve the community well, or realize the ship has sunk, and go on from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'll call in a little bit on what Larry said. I think for those interested in what PTARK does and why the school district should support it, just take a ride around to Manor, Penn, Level Green, Penn Township, Municipal Trafford, and you see a direct, direct result of what PTARK has meant to the improvements of those parks that our children play on. Would that have been done without PTARK? Possibly, but it is done because of PTARK, and it's something that this community is proud of, I know I am. You know, when people move into this area, we have a lot to offer, first-rate school district, first-rate facilities and programs for people to come into. So, you know, close all that down, where are these people going to go? They're going to go outside the community, and once that starts happening, who knows? People just may pick up and just leave and go to Franklin, go to Hemphill or whatever. And for the long-term future of the school district, I mean, for the, for the area and the residents, you know, I support our commitment to PTARK, and I think we should continue the vision that Dr. Marasty had all those years ago. I didn't mean to make it a discussion point on whether we're going to keep it or not, I just wanted to piggyback on what he said. I think there's, there's a lot more that it's offered than people realize, and I think that's probably one of its own faults, that it doesn't promote itself well enough on the benefits that it's provided to this community.
I would just like to comment, as everybody knows, I'm one of the loudest voices of the school district pulling out of PTARK. And it's not the fact that I don't feel it's a good organization. I made the comment before that a lot, I get a lot of phone calls, people knocking on my door at home, cystic fibrosis, the American Cancer Society, blind association, they're all good causes, but when I got two kids in college and there's not money to give them, I can't support them, and I don't think this district can afford to support these things. You know, when, when Dr. Marasty had his vision and formed PTARK, as Nick had said, there were thousands of people moving into this district. Taxes were going up, we had money. We didn't have the Peasers that we, situation we have now, we didn't have the healthcare situation costs we have now. It's a different time, and people say it's only $46,000, but that's, that's one teacher's salary to start out with. And as I said, I don't, it's not that I feel it's a bad program, I think we need to, we have already picked all the low-hanging fruit. We need to go for the tough calls.
Can I say something else? I didn't realize that I was going to generate so much discussion, but I'm glad I did. And please give your careful thought about supporting PTARK. Thanks.
Anybody else? Other comments?
I know we'll be talking about it for future meetings, but tonight, like I said, I was just brought your attention from a couple of different peoples, just one of the first points.
Well, no, I think people were speaking about it anyway.
I think they already signed it.
I think Larry was coming anyway, so, Bill was there, he's going to express himself anyways, so, it's nice to have him.
All right.
Let me ask Larry one quick question. Larry, I don't mean to ask for you to be a spokesperson for the commissioners, but in your opinion, does all five commissioners still believe in the cause of PTARK?
Yes.
I think that's an important piece of information, too. You have the municipality, and you have the, there are commissioners, and you have the school board members, and you have five of your commissioners all believe in the value that it gives this community. Not one dissenting vote, what's that tell you? And they support your bigger, are you the same amount, or are you more than we?
No, we're, Township is $38,000, you're $46,000.
But we match what they give, I believe. I think we match what the communities give.
And how, and how many, how many dollars in grants has the township received from, through PTARK?
Well, he received a half-million-dollar grant, it was a matching grant, but for the park...
How much has the school district received in grants through PTARK?
You're not going to get a direct correlation, but you can drive down to Level Green.
That's for sure.
In the park that those kids in that school play in.
It's all school district property.
It's all school district property, always...
And all that, the ball fields, the tracks, it's all school district property.
Marty lives down there, they can tell you how nice that park is now.
And I understand that some program there went very, very well.
I guess the number-one program in the district.
It's, it's, you may be right about that, Larry. Very well. That's 100% school district property, the ball fields, everything, the school district owns all that.
I appreciate you coming out, Larry.
Pleasure being here. Always a pleasure mingling with such great people.
All right. Okay, that being said, no more comments?